I'm trying to turn off my... So it doesn't go on me, you know?
I'd like to welcome everybody to Dewey Fire Company tonight to this special event, a school board candidates forum. My name is Josh Koppcheck and I'm the publisher of Saucon Source, which is the sponsor of the forum. I'd like to, again, thank Dewey Fire Company for allowing us to host this event here tonight for the good of the community. And I'd like to thank all of you for coming out in this weather to learn more about the candidates who are running for school board. This is obviously an important race in our community and, you know, a great thing to see such a turnout for a local political event. All eight candidates who are running were invited tonight and, as you can see, most have come. We have one person who may be coming late, Sandra Miller, due to a conflicting event. The format for the forum is going to be that each candidate will have up to four minutes to deliver an opening statement in which they'll talk about their background and why they're running. After that, I have some questions that have been submitted, as well as a few of my own that I will ask the candidates. And then lastly, we will have a time for audience number of questions. For that, you will need to come up here to the microphone and state your name and ask your question. And also, please identify yourself at that time. Please be respectful of others when asking your question and try to ask questions that pertain to all the candidates. I'd also like to make you aware that this event is live broadcast on Facebook and will also be uploaded to YouTube for the benefit of community members who could not be here tonight for whatever reason. So with that, I am going to hand it over to our first candidate to speak Cedric Detmar.
It doesn't seem like the microphone is working. We can hear you talking, but...
Not projecting loud enough?
Yes, like it's not on.
Yeah, there's the switch on top. Take it out.
Oh, no.
Thanks, Josh, and thanks to all of you guys who braved the rainy day, come out and watch all of us candidates sweat. First thing I'd like, actually, before I get into what I want to say, I'd like to thank again Josh for setting this up. I really agree with what he said, that it's really good for our community to come together like this and to hear what each other has to say. So a little background on me. I grew up in a small town in Colorado, smaller than Saucon Valley. And then I went to college in Boston at MIT. And from there, I moved from the east coast out to the west coast to Silicon Valley. And I worked for high-tech companies out there for over 20 years. And along the way, I got a business degree from UCLA and I became a vice president at Oracle Corporation, which is the second-largest software company in the world behind Microsoft. And I was responsible for over 100 people and $25 million in revenue. I learned a lot about people and a lot about making business work. And along the way, I also had Oracle, which I'm very grateful for, met my wife Kathleen. And eventually, we ended up moving out here to be closer, for Kathleen to be closer to her family and our children to be closer to their cousins. Currently, I work in a small business, doing similar kinds of things that I did at Oracle, providing software to other small businesses to help them use the internet and their smartphones to be more efficient. So seven years ago, Kathleen and I moved out here with our daughters Rebecca and Amanda and my mom Ludi. And we, both of us are the product of public schools and we wanted our children to go to public schools. So we searched around the Lehigh Valley. We knew we wanted to live here because it's where Kathleen's family lives. And we chose Saucon Valley. And our girls are currently in the middle school. And we're very committed to the school system for both the benefit of our own children as well as everybody else because we both believe in the community. So both of us have done a lot of volunteer work over the years. And some of the things that I've done are going to the school board meetings. I've actually gone virtually every school board meeting for the last few years, familiar with all the issues. I get up and speak a lot and I think most of the school board members know who I am. And I feel like I've really gotten a good understanding of the issues that we face, especially recently, the issues that we face, both with the stuff that's been in the news as well as our finances and a lot of other small issues. And in addition to attending the school board meetings, I also joined the Education Foundation that supports our local school district. Darn it, check. How much time do I have left? Oh, one minute. Okay, I better zip. Okay, so I've been a part of the Education Foundation there. I was the leader of building the nature center and I raised over $30,000 in corporate donors to help make that happen. I know what it means to raise money for our school district from donors. I've also worked in the, I've also worked in and around the school on a lot of various different projects. And I currently run the math club for 25 different kids. And we compete to get to the math counts competition. So what I really want to do is use that experience in our community to, and the motivation that I've shown and my business experience, to help make our school district better. One, to get us out of the news, and two, to face the budget challenges that we're going to be looking at or that we are looking at now, deficits as far as we can see. And I respectfully ask you guys to give me a shot to do that. I think we'll do a great job. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Scott Babashek. And I just wanted to also thank Josh for putting tonight together and giving us an opportunity to talk to you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a local business owner, a husband, and a dad. And I'm going to do my best not to embarrass my daughter Sophie, who is a sixth grader at Saucon Valley Middle School and would much rather be at Free Fall with her friends tonight. She and my wife lived here tonight, as well as my in-laws. I've been a resident of the Lehigh Valley for 17 years after moving here from New York City for a reporting job at WFMZ. That's where I met Liz, who's originally from Pittsburgh. We were both transplants, but loved the Lehigh Valley and we got married here. And when we briefly moved to California for a job opportunity, our agent told us to have fun, but don't get pregnant. So of course, we got pregnant. Afterwards, Sophie, we realized that we wanted to raise her in the place we met and the place we considered a second home, the Lehigh Valley. So we could have moved anywhere, but we came back here. And when Sophie needed full-day kindergarten, we sent her to St. Michael's and she loved it, but we decided she would benefit from broader opportunities. We have one child and could have sent her anywhere, charter school or private school, but we chose Saucon Valley School District because we knew she'd be getting a great education and she is. I coached youth soccer for years when Sophie was young. I might have had some of your kids on my team. And our family's engaged in numerous community programs. But I decided it was time to get involved because recently, we've become ashamed and embarrassed by the bad publicity coming from our school district and some board members. Ashamed of the racism and intolerance experienced in our schools, our outrageous school board meetings and student actions are ending up on TV just last night and in Rolling Stone magazine. Can you imagine telling a student who's been attacked that they should just learn to live with it? Or shouldn't have a gender studies elective? Or activism shouldn't be taught in high school? I heard a board member joke about being old-fashioned, then go on to say that as a school district, the problem is, we're trying to be all things to all people. Isn't that what we should be doing? There actually is a new school district mission statement that works and it weaves racial tolerance and inclusivity into our curriculum. And a committee has spent the last two years writing it. And I have to say, the words are impressive, but I think now's the time to implement it. We all know that budgets will be voted on and hard decisions about taxes and budget cuts will be made and not everyone will be happy. And we may soon realize that those budget issues prevent us from expanding or even offering new programs, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't make a wish list. So before we ask for funding or private money, we need to tell those potential partners and donors what we're going to do with it. So let's get to work on that. You know, I was recently telling a close friend of ours in the Southern Lehigh School District that I was tired of hearing how my better school district was than ours. Because it's not. Did you know that in a 2017 niche state ranking, Saucon Valley High School ranked 83rd out of 673 statewide schools and the Lehigh ranked 111th? We want to continue to attract new families and great teachers and we have an important decision coming up to replace our outgoing superintendent. It's time for a new perspective and a new attitude for the school board as a whole. And not just because our recent presidential campaign highlighted the divisiveness in our communities, but because from our own school board, I've heard statements that are unacceptable. We're teaching our daughter to think before she speaks, but that has not been the case for our board. In everything I do as a father and a husband and a former broadcast journalist and now a certified financial planner and business owner, I try to have the same approach. It's a combination of passion for all these commitments and a dedication to honesty, fairness, and objectivity. And that's what I'd like to bring to the school board. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As everyone else has, I'd like to thank Josh for putting this together. My name is Matthew Meliron. I've lived in the Lehigh Valley here for about the past 18 years. I originally grew up in northwestern Pennsylvania, out by Pittsburgh, about two hours north of there. Grew up in a small town, much like Hellertown is. And went to college and just started to meet my wife and we eventually settled here in the Saucon Valley area. And we bought a house just before my first daughter was born. I currently have a junior in Saucon Valley High School and I have an eighth grader, which is my youngest daughter, both of which are involved in the band, both of which are involved in the music program. And I have a prepared speech like everybody else. He suddenly, I've been involved in the community in that I've been on the Hellertown Planning Commission here for about the past 12 years. I'm currently serving as vice president on there. I've also been involved with my local church. I was on consisterate for about six years, president for two years. Had to step off for a year due to bylaws and now I'm back on and immediately stepped into the president's position again because as all churches go, we have turmoil and things are moving along. Our pastor's retiring and I figured I picked a good year to become president. I have to deal with the pastor leaving and finding a new pastor. I'm also the treasurer for the Saucon Valley Music Connection and I'm heavily involved with the band. I volunteer as a volunteer roadie, go to a lot of the shows and help a lot. Part of the reason why I wanted to run for the school board is, as everyone else has stated, I really can't handle the way things have been happening with the school district. Don't see a very good direction on where we're going, nor do I see when individuals are making decisions. They don't seem to be talking to the community or even taking the community's thoughts into consideration. Also, I've had a couple of friends who have students in the district and the students have wanted to talk. They seem to ignore them as well. And I just think we all need to work together and come up with a plan on how we want to lead the district and where we want to go. And that's one of the things I want to bring is that sense of community, that sense of working together, and also having them bring the data forward for these decisions because I feel like we're working in a vacuum. So that's what I'd like to bring to the school district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shamim Paksad. Let me also join everyone and thank you for coming here and for Josh to organize this. I thought I'm going to tell you a little about why I'm running for the school board, but first let me introduce my family who are here in the audience, my wife Nidu and my boys Ryan and Sian. They are the reason I became interested and involved in this school and wanted to contribute to make a difference. My boy and thousands of other children in this community spend seven or more hours a day, five days a week, every week for a better month, a better number of nine months, 10 months, every year, under the care of this district. So it matters. The main lines of the sketch of the future are drawn here within the confines of this debate. I want to do my best to make sure they receive the best education possible and they all reach their highest potentials. And we will do our best to make that a reality for every single one of them. I set the goal to make this school be the best school with the best education for everyone. I want to raise the bar, and I keep saying that, I want to raise the bar. And a lot of it is for us, the parents, the school district, and the entire community, to make sure we don't fail anyone and we don't let any of their potentials go to waste. I'm a taxpayer in this community. We taxpayers pay more taxes here to this district than any other district in this area. We pay the top dollars, yet we get in return not what we deserve. A district that collects the highest rates of taxes owes that to the community, has an obligation to provide them with the proper return for their investments. And we are not living up to that obligation. We need to raise the bar for us, the community, the district, and this board that we are all trying to take a seat there, so that we give people their money's worth of educational excellence and reputation that will help their economic prosperity, improve their home values, and the standing of this community. I'm an educator and an engineer. As an educator, I have taught sixth grade math, high school algebra, college physics, and postgraduate science and engineering. I have mentored a lot of hundreds of students throughout their academic career, sat in and led committees on various aspects of educational policy. As an engineer, I have designed buildings, inspected transmission towers, climbed bridges, and studied physical infrastructure. All with an analytical eye and data-driven point of view, I have received and managed large federal, state, and foundation grants and have skills and expertise that equipped me, helped navigate us through these difficult times. Our district must look for a new character, something beyond the highest tax district in this area. And I'm ready to contribute and help make that vision become a reality. We should get the best education at the best price and I can help that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. My name's Tracy Magnata. I just want to thank Josh for having us all here tonight so we can let you all know a little bit more about us and get to meet some of the people in the community. I've given a lot of thought about why I'm running for school board. And there are the obvious reasons that I'm, I have four boys in the school district ranging from first grade to seventh grade. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner, I've watched my home values go down while my taxes are still extremely high. I'm a volunteer in the schools. I strongly believe in giving back to the community. And I'm an attorney with almost 20 years of experience litigating complex products liability cases. I was born and raised in the Lehigh Valley. But those are the obvious reasons. They're all true. But what it boils down to me, for me, is that I spent years looking at a lot of change, a tremendous amount of change in our school district. And what that caused me to do was start to go to board meetings and really pay attention to what is going on within our district. And as I observed the board meetings, I saw some deficits where it would be common sense to me and I thought it was lacking during these board meetings. There was a lack of communication. There was a lack of getting, soliciting feedback or input from the community. There was a lack of really showing any respect to the parents, the community members, or the teachers who appear in front of them. There was a lack of out-of-the-box thinking on how to be fiscally responsible, but also provide an excellent education to every single student who graduates from our school district. So I started doing research about what other top school districts do. And I looked at school districts in Pennsylvania and I looked at school districts across the country and how they manage those issues. And I saw how some school districts manage to bring in revenue without increasing property taxes and bankrupting homeowners, how they hold town halls, they undertake surveys, how they really show the community that they value their input, and how they expand opportunities for the children in their community. The bottom line for me is I believe I can make a difference. I believe that we are in a crisis right now where we have a big budget deficit. There are areas of our schools that are in disrepair. There are programs that a lot of competitive schools have that we are lacking. And the board is looking at two things. They're looking at either raising taxes and incurring debt by taking out bonds or cutting programming. That's what it comes down to. The most creative thing I think I've heard was maybe charging for parking at the high school, which to me, this is unacceptable. If I'm elected to school board, I would like to head up an alternative funding committee. I would like to see corporate donors contribute as well as leverage free resources that are out there, you know, available to our district to use. And the bottom line is, is if you want the same old, same old, then I'm probably not your candidate for school board. But if you'd like someone who is on board, who's committed to strengthening the bond between the school and the community, which I think is lacking right now, who's committed to ensuring that the school district is academically competitive, who's committed to looking at creative ways of increasing revenue and expanding opportunities for the children of this community without increasing taxes, then I would ask that you vote for me. Thank you.
I also want to thank Josh for setting this up and I want to thank the other candidates and thank you, the community members, for coming out. It's really an honor for me to be here. My name's Joe Harvey. Because this is how we're going to succeed, this is how we're going to get things done as we get in a room like this, the stakeholders at Saucon Valley. But I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised near a small town of Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania. And I spent a lot of that time growing up in Montour Township in Columbia County, right outside of Bloomsburg. And my parents, my grandparents, my uncles and my aunts, my dad's here tonight, but they all went to a one-room schoolhouse, similar to the one-room schoolhouse that we take our third graders to, the Let's Frank the Schoolhouse. And in that schoolhouse, they learned the values of hard work, helping others, and giving back to the community. And when my grandfather grew up, he and my great-grandfather and my uncles were, started the very first volunteer fire company in Montour Township. So I have a really soft spot in my heart for firefighters. So I'm going to say thank you to the volunteer firefighters here and Dewey Fire Company and thanks for having us out. And if you could give them a round of applause. And I really appreciate their motto of neighbors helping neighbors. Over 20 years ago, my wife and I moved to the Lehigh Valley and we lived in many communities. We lived in Nazareth, we lived in McConaughey. But when it was time for us to raise our kids, we chose Saucon Valley. And the reason that we did was not only because of the top-notch schools, but it was because we found in this place the same tight-knit community that we experienced growing up, the same values that we saw, that my grandparents saw in that one-room schoolhouse. So we even encouraged my dad to move down here and he did. And he's lived here for over 10 years. So we're really invested in this community. Both of my kids went to school and have spent their entire years here at Saucon Valley. My son will be a senior and my daughter's a freshman. I've spent almost my whole life in education, my whole adult life. And I had the privilege of teaching in Saucon Valley for four years and I'm proud of that. During that time, I had the privilege of getting to know many kids and many parents in this community through going to concerts, recitals, baseball games, soccer games. And I really enjoyed that and I'm proud of that. And that's really why I'm running. I'm running for you. I believe that we shouldn't take for granted what we have here at Saucon because what we have is something special. And I think that we should acknowledge that every time we set forth into trying to solve those problems that we face. I'm not running with any preconceived agenda or idea or ideology. I'm running to give back to the community. I'm running to be a good steward to the resources that this community has and to help make it a better place than it is today. I'm running to help reconnect the community to the district. And most importantly, I'm running for the kids. That's why I'm here. Because I want to be an advocate for them and I want to give them a voice to ensure that their needs are met. I'm asking you for your vote. I don't ask that lightly because I know how powerful it is. But I think that we could change this community, not through spectacular feats, but by little feats and by the little things that we do each and every day. And I'm asking that you'll vote for me on May 16.
Hello, my name is Sandra Miller. I'm in my 12th year as a school board director. I want to offer my apologies for being late. I was at a funeral. I didn't have a lot of expectations that I was going to even make it today. But I thought I'd race over and get an opportunity to at least have you ask questions. I don't have any prepared comments. Most of you are familiar with me. If you don't know me, you know of me, unfortunately or fortunately. There is a marvelous opportunity to have this many parents sitting next to me. I don't know if you know that I've been desperate for individuals to run for the school board since I ran 12 years ago, 13 years ago. I guess the first time I ran was 14 years ago as a write-in. And I fortunately was able to be joined by Mark Civic as another parent. But we have not had parents on the school board for a very long time. There's a number of individuals that don't necessarily think that that's terribly important. But I can tell you the value of having individuals that, when you're having conversations about students and coaches and teachers, that they know who you're talking about and that they are feeling connected in a way that if you don't ever walk into the building except to go to a board meeting, you don't have to the district. So I could walk away truthfully and be thrilled with any of the individuals that as a parent are running. But we're in the middle of some transition times and I've been convinced that it was a wise decision to stay on the ballot for now. But I want you to know that it's an honor to participate with the candidates that are here this time. I think that the community will only win with the choices that we have. And, you know, this district, I don't know if you know anything about me, but I moved here when I was six years old. And I graduated from here. I don't think very many people usually say that and still sit in these halls and do these things that are around here. But I left for 20 years and I moved to a real diverse, wonderful... But I left for 20 years and I moved to a world diverse, wonderful communities. And I just come back because I felt this was where it would be appropriate for me to be with my family and my children. And I'm committed to this community. I wouldn't be doing this for 12 years if I didn't care about it. And I, I really want to see people that are on the school board that care about the kids and care about the school and care about the community. And I think that we are a strong group of individuals that would do well if we worked together. But I have to also say, I know people have quite a diverse opinion about people, but we're a great school and we're a wonderful community. And working together, we will only continue to succeed. Thank you.[643.35][643.35](applause)
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your remarks. Now we are going to, I'm going to ask some questions that have been submitted by readers of Saucon Source, community members. And some of these questions are basically just a one-word answer. So I'm going to combine two questions for the first round. The question is, what is your political party? Or if you are independent or unaffiliated, you can say that too. You can also decline the answer. And the second, second part of the question is, are you a current former teacher? And do you have any immediate family members who are current or former teachers?
Interesting that I'm first on this. I'm a registered Republican. That's because Pennsylvania requires you to be registered as a party. I believe that a school board, first and foremost, should be a nonpartisan. And I don't believe that anybody should be having to require to vote at the primary. I've said that from the very beginning. I don't believe that party and partisanship should be part of school boards. So if you want me to say that I am a strong conservative Republican, you are strongly mistaken. That is not my role. So I say that to Charlie Depp, who's a dear friend of mine. If I could be a moderate Republican and still be registered, but just said the other day that I've got to find a way to figure out how to be able to vote and be an independent because it's not working for me. No, I have no one that is currently, I'm not a teacher, I've not been a teacher, but I do work in education. I am a consultant for a group of education associations that have worked together to form a coalition called the Campaign for Fair Education Funding. So in some very, they call us the P organizations. So it's the Pennsylvania Association of School Boards, Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, the Pennsylvania Association of Superintendent, Pennsylvania Association of Small and Rural Schools. It's a large group of individuals. I am hired as a consultant to work from Northampton County to the New York border, educating and school leaders to be better advocates for their students and themselves. We have amazing money in the state of Pennsylvania for education because we are one of the worst-funded state-supported education systems in the United States. That's my background.
I agree with Sandra as, as far as the, that school boards shouldn't really be partisan. That's why I cross-filed. It's like, like I said in my opening remarks, I don't bring any ideology or agenda to the job. I don't think that that is going to get done and honor what we need to do if we bring that. But I'm a registered Democrat and I am a proud former teacher.
I'm a registered Democrat. I'm cross-filled on the ballot. I agree that there should not be an agenda, a political agenda, when you're running for the school board. It should be a nonpartisan position. And what you need to bring to the job is common sense, a commitment, some drive, some vision. These are the, these are the traits that I feel like I'll bring to the board. But registered as a Democrat, I've never been a teacher. I don't have any family members who are teachers in Saucon Valley School District. I do have some family members that are teachers in other districts, but not immediate family.
It seems like by the question that we're saying that being a teacher is a negative thing.
Yes. I want to take that back from you.
And just, just so you know, it doesn't explicitly say in the bylaws of the, of the school board that teachers should be on, but it's implied.
That they should be?
That they should be. It actually says that. When I was, of course, I mean, I would love to come and work for Saucon again. And I was like, what's going to, am I going to be a [inaudible]? And it actually says in the bylaws, in the, in the, that you can read online, that if a teacher or if a member of the school board gets appointed by a, to be a teacher, that the only thing that's required is a two-thirds vote by board. So that's explicitly implying to people who wrote those that teachers would serve on the board. So, you know, this thing about, is there going to be a teacher running for, well, yes. It makes sense. And that's why it was written into those bylaws.
You asked for a yes or no answer.[972.73][972.73](laughter) I'm a creative voter. I'm proud of that. And I don't think you actually need to be registered in any party to vote in Pennsylvania. You just can't vote in the primary. But hopefully there are thousands of other people who will listen to your message and who will go and vote for you. I have been a teacher. I, you know, part of what I do is teaching, but I haven't been a teacher in high school, middle school, or elementary school for a very, very long time.
I don't think they hear your register as a lot.
Unaffiliated voter. Unaffiliated. Always got to listen to the wife.[1030.44][1030.44](laughter)
I am a registered Democrat, but I also consider myself to be the most non-political political person there is. I am not a teacher, but I am, my wife is, actually has an early childhood degree, but she is not a teacher within the district. She's actually the children's librarian under the Eller Town Library. I believe I answered all the questions.
So I'm actually a Democrat, registered Democrat, although I have voted for Republicans and my wife doesn't let me forget that. Couple of reasons why I'm a Democrat, specifically at this time in the country. I'm pro-environment. I'm pro-women. I'm pro-public education. And I'm also pro-affordable healthcare. So those, I thought were important to let me know why at this time I'm proud to be a Democrat. But believe it or not, I also believe in fiscal responsibility. So you can be both. As far as teachers, I'm actually surrounded by them in my family, right in our home. I hear about all of Sophie's teachers every day. But my wife is a teacher at Penn State Lehigh Valley and runs a multimedia innovation center. And I took this out of my speech because we only had four minutes and you're very good with the 30-second.[1126.66][1126.66](laughter) I wouldn't put it back in. But it's a very diverse population at Penn State Lehigh Valley. And I hear amazing stories from Liz who relishes every day. They are working with nationalities, dozens of nationalities, and those students sharing their stories of immigration, their stories of their families' immigration, generations of hard times and success. And I think the students who share that with each other and are encouraged to share it because it's all over campus is extremely important. My sister-in-law is a middle school teacher at Brockel Middle School. And my other sister-in-law, who's here, Katrina, is a teacher at the Waldorf School in Focalsville and actually has traveled around the country, her husband in tow, to find the best opportunities for the type of school that she'd like to teach in. And Waldorf is certainly unique. And she is probably the most dedicated teacher I know. Maybe it's a tie with my other sister-in-law. Thank you.
I am a registered Republican, though I would definitely consider myself a moderate. Though I actually think that, as some of the other folks have said, that the, sort of our national political issues, the more that we can keep those out of running our school district, the better off we are. It's when they sort of intrude on us that we get into the most difficulty. Now unfortunately, since we're all people and we all have our ideas about how things should be, it's unavoidable that that will happen sometimes. But the issues that we face of, of, you know, how much money we should tax our community with and how, and how we should teach our kids are really not, really, I don't think should be partisan issues. And it's my intention, if I do get onto the board, to, to operate with that in mind. Thanks. Oh, wait, teachers, yeah. I am not a teacher. No one in my family is a teacher. And I have no connection to the school except for the volunteer work that I described. I do love teachers.[1268.58][1268.58](laughter)
The next question is about sort of a hot topic nationally and locally right now would be the use of school bathrooms by transgender students. Will you support the use of bathrooms in public school according to gender identity? This is a topic that is currently in the news because of Boyertown School District. And there's a lawsuit over it there. So the question, I wanted to hear your view on that.
Oh, I'm thrilled to be the first one to answer this.[1318.23][1318.23](laughter) You know, this is, this is one of those issues that I really think I just described where it's kind of a national political issue that is, that causes a lot of localities, a lot of problems. I think that this probably would not even come up if it weren't for all the attention it's getting at the national level. Because normally, these kinds of things get handled in a quiet way and, and a solution that's acceptable to everybody is, is what, is what it's gone with. And it just, and everybody's fine with it. And I think that to the extent that, though it may be impossible at this point, but to the extent that we can do that, that would be ideal. But I really think that it's important, especially for our kids who are growing up and they're trying to find a way in the world. And, and all of us as grownups know how hard it is just to be grownups, and it's especially hard to be a kid these days. And I think that we need to cut our kids some slack and, and find a way to, to let them do the things that they need to do to, to be healthy and happy. And that's the approach that I would try to take.
I should have added to the list of reasons I'm a Democrat. I'm, I'm pro-LGBT. And there's a reason that the T was added on to LGBT because if you believe that individuals choose to be any of those identities, LGB or transgender, there's a disagreement in the country about whether people are born that way or just suddenly wake up and make that decision. So I think the most important thing, especially with students, by the way, anybody who would call themselves transgender and claim that they'd have the right to use the bathroom would have gone through an enormous amount of therapy. Somebody who's actually transitioning, this isn't, you know, this thing that they should have to hide. They actually have therapy, they have to have approvals from doctors. They don't just walk into a plastic surgeon one day and decide it. So they struggle with it for a long time. The T was added on transgender because it's become, we've become a society where people feel a little bit easier, but not quite 100% comfortable with coming out and dealing with what are the issues that they're facing. So I think, I don't think, saying that we would allow it to happen in school means that we're just going to let any boy go into the girls' room or any girl go into the boys' room. It's a, a tender situation and we've got to educate, I believe, educate our students on what that means. I don't think we should avoid it so that there's this fear of it. So I think that, that that's where we start. And it's not just a blanket decision of, okay, you can use a bathroom. We know there are going to be kids who abuse that. So let's, let's ramp up the education on what the, the young children around us and adults, for that matter, are going through.
Sorry, we kind of have to play with the wire. This is something I've always struggled with in my mind, one of those decisions. And it's one of those things that is, something that has a bunch of presence in the news nowadays. And I believe that, as has already been stated, if we take the correct approach to it, have discussions about it, have the correct education with this, it is something that we as a community, we as a school district, we as a nation can eventually come to terms with and decide how we actually want to handle this.
My answer is yes, I would. Well, I'm going to be honest, this is a tough, it's a really tough question. And it's one that I would struggle with to some degree. And not because I don't support the transgender kids. I think there's a balance between both. You have to, we have a responsibility to make sure that every kid in the school is comfortable and that they're supported. So I think we would need to sit down and think about some different options that we give to those kids and make sure that every student, though, feels comfortable, supported, sent to the subject for kids who aren't transgender and kids who are, you know, dealing with it in a dressing room. So from a common sense perspective, I don't think that there's an easy answer to that question. I think it's something that, you know, we would really need to weigh the community, get the community's feedback and really weigh the interests of all the kids and make sure every single student feels comfortable going into the restroom or going into the locker room. And whether that means you have something that's, you know, gender-neutral that people can use separately or things like that. I mean, there's always other options, but I wouldn't say that I'd be opposed to it and I wouldn't say that I would strongly say yes. I think it's a really tough decision to balance the, balance the needs of all the kids and how they feel in that situation, so.
I'm pro-LGBTQ, if you have to put a, if I have to put a label on it. But I'm pro-kid. And that's all kids. And kids have to know that we value them, every single one of them. And I think that we need to be empathetic to all kids' pointy views and all kids, and we have to honor who they are as people. So yes, that, that doesn't mean that we vote yes or whatever. We're just going to open up the doors and it's going to be, you know, floodgates go through. This question really illustrates and highlights the need for education amongst our faculty and the kids in school in terms of differences and... our faculty and the kids in school in terms of differences, and getting along, diversity. I think that if a decision like that would be made, the groundwork would have to be done first.
I think that, my experience has been thus far, that most of the people that have a problem with it are usually the adults in the room and not the children. Most of the children that I've experienced are far more accepting and willing to open their hearts and minds to their fellow students. They know them as people and not as a gender. I'm very comfortable with the decisions that have been made thus far in handling a huge variety of issues, and it's been done so well that most of you have no idea what happens day in and day out in our building, because it's been done in an appropriate and safe and wonderful way for the students that have a rash for issues. You know, you, no idea one day to the next what's going to happen in a small district or a large district. And, and the best decision that's been made is usually for the child, and it has worked out very well. But I really feel strongly that children don't make that decision in a light way. And if a child identifies as a, someone who's going that path, every opportunity should be there to support them, make sure that that is a positive experience for them, and that we don't set them up to make that a good experience in the, in the school. They should be safe and welcome at all times.
Okay, another submitted question we have is about the finances of the district, and whether, specifically, the questioner wants to know, would you support, or consider supporting, cutting teacher positions at Sauk Valley in order to help keep costs down in the future? If you would, how would you accomplish this? If you would be opposed to that, what other ways would you propose to cut costs?
I'll take the first one. I definitely would not support cutting teachers to cut costs in the district. I think there's nothing good that can come out of increasing class sizes for the students. And, you know, having had kids in the district, some of whom have been in class sizes of 28 kids versus a class size of 19 kids, it is a significant difference for the teachers to teach that large group, especially in elementary school. So no, I would not support cutting teachers to cut costs. I do think that there's a lot of other fact that can be cut to cut costs that I've seen over the past few years, and I can give a couple of examples. Just a few things that I've noticed, they've bought some additional standardized testing, which, you know, costs some money to the district, and the same, similar testing we get for free through the state. We bought MAP testing, so now our kids get MAP tested three times a year, and they also get the CDTs in middle school, which is a free test through the state, and it gives mostly the same information. So I think there's other areas where you could find out cost without a teacher saying class sizes are better for the students, because I, I think that will harm the students in the long run.
I'm not opposed to cutting teachers for cutting costs, surprisingly. But, I think we would have to look really long and at, because I tell you right now, just from experience from the inside, this district is running lean, very lean, as far as teachers and students, and just, and I've been in situations where, you know, teachers get pulled here and there. And I, I taught the elementary school, so I can't say what happens in high school or middle school. But I've seen positions consolidated, teachers are stretched. I'm not opposed to it, because you'd have to, you know, you have to look at it to see, you know, what it is, of course. But I think that we'd have to really research it and look at it really hard before you did that. I, I personally think that there's a few areas that there, that you could add some teachers. Now, look, you have to take the whole picture into consideration, and I don't have that whole picture right now. I just see it from one point of view. But I would not be opposed to it.
Obviously, I've lived this for a long period of time. We haven't raised taxes in Sauk Valley for nine years. We're running a deficit. This will be our third year that we're currently involved in, because we refuse to raise taxes in order to meet the needs of our community. We have not filled positions due to retirement, but we have not had to eliminate any positions. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania does not allow us to lay teachers off for economic reasons, so we do not have something which is called economic furlough. So we would have to, if we decide to cut teachers, we would have to eliminate entire programs of current teachers. So that would mean, what school districts across the Commonwealth have done is that they've eliminated an entire language, or they'll eliminate an entire program in the arts or their music. And we all know that those programs provide unique opportunities to some of our students, as their only place that they find joy and fulfillment, and also their only places that they might find their future employment. So, reality is, is that, you know, I, I appreciate that individuals think that we don't need to raise taxes. We will be needing to raise taxes. I've said that before, and I will say that again. And you can all, you know, accept that. We are also a community that does not meet the needs of many grants. Our demographics are different. We do have up to 30% of our students qualifying for free and reduced lunch, but we are not qualifying for Title I. So when you go out to look at some of those foundations, and you go out to look with those corporations, they're not going to be looking at the Sauk Valleys. We are the second highest median household income in Northampton County. We have the third highest taxes. We aren't the highest any longer. There are a number of communities that are higher per mil. But we have a really wide range. When I first moved here, we had 4% of our students on free and reduced lunch, and we're now, we were over 30, and now I believe, I was corrected the other day, we are about 28%. But that's at the elementary school. Teachers make up 70% of our budget. Bottom line. We are a human resource laden, you know, I don't want to say economy, but that's what we are. The last thing that I want to ever see is a teacher go, and, and the only way to do that is going to be raising rent. And that is my only answer. I don't know how else to do it. We are lean. We've cut everything that we can cut. We've reduced staff development. We've reduced curriculum. We've reduced, as you can imagine, in a period of time when our expenditures for pensions alone have increased over 200% since 2010, and we've not raised taxes. Our charter school has raised over 200% since 2010, and we've not raised taxes. Those are the bottom line. We have huge expenditures that we have to meet. And if we want to keep a great school district, and want to keep the teachers, we're gonna have to raise taxes. Bottom line.
Well, as Director Miller mentioned, the law doesn't allow you to fire teachers who are tenured for economic reasons. So I think the question is a moot question, you know, from that perspective. But let me answer it a different way. I think there is an optimum number of teachers for a school based on the students that it has, and based on the programs that it has. And we can decide about the number of teachers and the areas that teachers are hired or replaced based on that. So I don't believe that one teacher goes and then one teacher should be hired in his or her place. I, I believe that we should have a strategic vision about where we go as a school district, what our goals are, and have a longer-term plan for the hiring of the new teachers, or creating positions that, that would address those, those needs. And, you know, I'm, I'll just mention one other thing, that I'm, I'm glad that the law doesn't allow for the teachers who are performing well and are serving our kids, not to be, not to be fired. I, I support that law. And I, I think there is a human element there, and I think for a teacher to, to be at a level that is, is, is an experienced teacher and could benefit our kids and our society, and, you know, in this case, our community, these are the most valuable treasures that a school district could have. So I'm glad we are not allowed to fire them, and I'm glad that that question is not generally part of a budget balancing discussion. But, but as I, as I said, as a longer term and a strategic planning, we should, we should be smart, and we should decide where we are gonna put our resources that would pay us the most payback.
We actually talk about this quite a bit on Land and Commission. And part of the problem we have with this area that we're in is we're a small school district, and we have a small area that we can actually draw revenue from. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot, a lot, a large number of large businesses in the area. So places like the King of Prussia area or that, where they have big malls and lots of businesses, they have the ability to use the commercial taxes to help fund the school district. Unfortunately, we have a lot of homes in this area, so the only place that the revenue can come from is from the property taxes. I do not, I don't want to see us have larger class sizes. I actually personally went to a small college, because I didn't want to be sitting in the classroom with 100 people, all taking general camp, or general physics or anything like that. I went to a school where our class sizes were about 25 to 27 people, which I felt was a good class size for college. But where I went to school at, our class sizes ran for about 20. I do think we need to continue to look at the long-range plan and plan better for where we do have our teachers at. Also, take a better look at how we can utilize them, or how we can use resources better than we have. We also need to try and look at additional funding sources. I know there are some out there, and we may or may not qualify for them, but I think we just need to continue to do that. And like Sandra said, unfortunately, I think we do need to eventually look at raising taxes, but I think we need to be smarter about it. Not these huge 5, 10. I remember when my wife and I first bought a house in town, the first year we lived here, our taxes went up 10%. And I turned to my wife and I said, if this happens every year, there's no way we're gonna be able to continue to live here. But I think if we look at it, instead of not raise taxes for a period of nine years, how about have 1% increase or a 2% increase, you know, something that people can plan for better, so that way you don't get to where, okay, it's been 10 years, we're running a couple million dollar deficit, we need a huge amount of money. So I think that's where we actually need to head.
Well, I, I think letting teachers go would be the worst-case scenario. I know that we're running a tight budget, and Sandra knows better than anybody. I think that's why the, the idea that we are in a period where we need a new perspective isn't just about me or any of us running for a board seat. It's also, as most of us mentioned or in a few speeches, that we need to hire a new superintendent. Now, I don't think that we can go out there with this belief that we're gonna hire somebody who promises us the world and then can't deliver it. But I do think that we should keep in mind when we are looking for a superintendent, that that person has potentially some experience dealing with budget issues. And the fact is, that there are a couple hundred of those districts in the state that where they're probably gonna find a superintendent who loves this area, and we convince them to come here, and he or she can help us tackle that. What I would also say is that, once we find a superintendent, and they convince us that they have, have some ideas, and the administrators are consulted, that I would be, and anybody else who sits on the board, in a better position to present to you what the issues are. So what are we facing, and what are the decisions? And I think that better communication, and also involvement from parents at board meetings, at school board meetings. So I do pledge to share that information and, and come up with a way to communicate that on a regular basis for those that are interested. Because if it does lead to a tax increase, and enough board members vote for it, it's really too late to complain. So I think, instead of critiquing, and this was part of my six-minute speech, let's, let's try to educate and inform the adults in the room as well, and then get that feedback, and, and not wait until it's done to say, hey, you know, I don't like what just happened. So I think that's extremely important. And by the way, we need to face reality that what we're facing today is probably nothing compared to what we face when our current administration, and specifically our Education Secretary, explodes the, the funding that's coming to us already. So that's not a positive situation for public education, and that's a reality. And I don't think we need to spend a lot of time thinking about that right now, because it's, it's not good news. But let's focus on what we do with a new superintendent and the perspective.
I, I agree with what some of the other candidates have said, that there's a lot, there's a very limited ability in what you can do as far as, as far as cutting on teachers, cutting back on teachers. And as, as a longtime board watcher, the, the board members, the current board members right now have, are, one of the things that they're really good at is scouring the school, looking for places to cut. And I think that they've pretty much cut all the easy things that there are to cut. So there isn't really anything left, except the kinds of things that Sandra was talking about, like cutting entire programs. And I would definitely not be in favor of that, both for the benefit of our kids, but also for the benefit of all of us and the value of our property. I mean, if we become a school district who's cutting back on art programs, cutting back on phys ed, and music, I mean, that's, we're, we already struggle to get people who are moving into the Lehigh Valley and who do a, who do a search like, like my family did, to decide what district to move into. We're not, we're not as high up on the list as we used to be. And if we do start doing things like that, it will just be, it'll just start us on a downward slide that's even worse than sort of the one we're on right now. So I wouldn't be in favor of that. Unfortunately, what, what can happen, and, and, and this is really kind of a last resort, is not laying teachers off or firing them, but the replacement of teachers that retire, because every year, a few teachers do retire, and there has to be a decision made. Do we replace those, and what does it mean for class sizes? What does it mean for offering of programs? You know, there, there was a discussion a few years ago about whether we should hire a new, I don't, I can't remember what the new name is, I'm sure you guys could all correct me on this, but we used to call it home economics, whether, whether that teacher should be replaced.
Consumer science.
Consumer science, okay. You know, the, I, I'm not in favor of cutting back on those kind of programs, like I said, because I think that would be bad for our district to get into that kind of a mode of solving our problems. What, what I think would be helpful for our community is to come up with a plan that's more than just one year, as far as the community is concerned. Because when I go to the school board meetings and I look at the budgets that are available, this is the first year, actually, that, that there's ever been a five-year forecast put up on the website since I've been watching. Up in, I have seen a few in the past when I was running before, but they, they weren't out there for everybody to see. When I look at what other school districts are doing, I see them making a decision for the next five years, and obviously, things can change. But they, they let the community know what they can expect as far as taxes go, so that people can plan. And the law does... And the law does put a lot of constraints on the school district in terms of how much money can be raised. Typically, unless you have a really good reason, which we probably don't here in Saucon Valley, you can just raise by the index, which tracks pretty close to inflation, somewhere 2%, 3%, somewhere in that range. So obviously, I'm not in favor of raising taxes unless we absolutely have to, but I don't want to cut our schools to the point where we pay for it instead with lost property value. So that's really, that communication of what our plans are as a school district, I think, is probably the most important thing that would help everybody, if we do have to raise taxes, help everybody deal with it and know what to expect for more than just the next six or eight months like we do right now. I already answered the tax question.
Superintendent Monica McHale Small recently announced she will be retiring at the end of this school year. What qualities and qualifications would you like to see in the next superintendent with whom you will be working if elected?
I think that choosing the superintendent is probably the most important decision that the school board has to make. Obviously, deciding the balance between taxes and resources for our schools is right up there. But I think that the superintendent is, like if you were to compare a school district to a business, which financially, without more familiar with, the superintendent is CEO and the school board is the board of directors. And as much as the school board has say about how things can be done, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of decisions that the superintendent makes that the school board never even hears about. Because that's just what a CEO has to do. There are lots of things, lots of decisions that have to be made. And so it's really important to somebody that is going to reflect the desires of our community and the way that the board wants the school to be run. And I know that from some conversations with the board that Dr. McHale Small was partly chosen because we were anticipating difficulties in our elementary school with our youngest in terms of getting them up to speed and getting them reading so that they will be successful in school. And that was one of the things that she has, was really passionate about. And I think that's great. But she also had other ideas and other things that I didn't necessarily agree with. But it's never going to be possible for you to pick somebody, to get a good, talented person and agree with them about everything. But I think that the person we choose needs to reflect our desires to make our school district more respectable compared to the other school districts. Some of the things that have happened in the past, which I think are great, are adding AP exams for the high school because we were really quite delinquent in that department. I think there are other ideas that we could also do to bring some distinction for our school district. I think that it's important that when people are choosing what school district to live in, that they look at individual programs that they could, that their children could benefit from. And that without spending, without spending oops and gobs more money, we could offer some of these programs in our schools. And, you know, it wouldn't require any additional teachers, just maybe some money for some specific programs. So we're talking maybe tens of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars, to really make our school more desirable for people who are looking at school districts and benefit our own children so that they can have a better edge when they're competing to get into college and to get good jobs when they're finished with their education. And so those are the kind of things that I would think about in choosing a superintendent.
I did mention in our last go around about finding a superintendent who has had experience with budgets. So fiscal experience, I think, is there. But I think, I might say, as importantly is their ability to communicate. Again, we're in a transition where I think it would be important to have somebody who can carry a true message of unity. We all remember our favorite principals. I know we're talking about a superintendent, but her presence around the schools and that campus is much, much more so than I remember superintendents. And my favorite principals were the ones that didn't suspend me. But they always, everybody remembers or knows about a special principal. Sophie had one at St. Michael's, her first principal. It was a young guy and his enthusiasm was contagious. When he walked down the hall, when you had a parent event, a student event, he care, like a lot of teachers do. And that's the passion that I think we needed. And I think those people are out there and we have a great community. Lehigh Valley, in the 17 years I've been here, has done tremendous things. It's a quality of life improvement that I never imagined. And so I think we can attract somebody who has that intelligence, but a combination of intelligence and passion and the drive to say, you know what, I'm going to make this change. And if it takes them three years or four years or five years and they're on their way, maybe we're lucky they're here 10 years, then we've done something good. So it's a big decision coming up.
Working in the business world most of my life, I also tend to look at any public institution as a business. The same way as, you know, the superintendent of the school is the president of the committee, but the school board is the board of directors. And that's one of the ways really you can look at it. So when you're looking at a superintendent, you need to look at someone who not only knows the education side, but also someone who's willing to do the long range planning, who's willing and has an understanding of budgets, who's willing to look out and see what's going on and where the course of all the education is heading. So that way, we can get someone in here who's willing to work with the teachers, work with the students, come up with a budget that fits, but also help prepare these kids for the real world. Where I'm at, I work in downtown Philadelphia. A lot of the kids that are there, and especially I have some guys that I work with who have said this, is the schools down there aren't really preparing these kids for real life, especially in that area. And I kind of look at what we're doing up here and I think we're doing a better job at it, but I don't think we're necessarily giving them the education that they need to go out into the real world. And I think we need to do a better job at that. And when we go to look for a new superintendent, we need someone who maybe hasn't been a teacher all their life. Maybe they did have some business experience and took up teaching as a second job and then moved into the administration side. And I think we just need to look at it with a more holistic view and come up with an individual that can meet those requirements.
So superintendent is the face of the district. The CEO, of course, that position is a certified state officer. And the future of the district basically depends on that. This is, I think, one of the few, if not the only, position that the board actually hires directly. So there are many qualities. I think the most important quality that I would be looking for is what is the vision for the district? They gain a, not a one-year vision, not a two-year vision, but a long-term vision for the district that the superintendent has or a candidate. And what qualification this person has to take us there and what plans does he or she has to implement? And I think that's the major element or the criteria that anyone who's hiring, anyone should have in mind. We should know beforehand what we are getting into. This is a, let's call it the marriage, that lasts for at least a few years and hopefully for a long time between the community and the person who they put in charge of the most important function of the community, which is the public school. So I think I can say with certainty, I won't take that lightly. It is not, it's not a light decision and it's not a decision that you want to keep making. Communication is a key aspect in this job. Communication with the teachers, communication with students, communication with the parents, and communication with the community. And the communication to the outside world. We've all seen the, you know, examples where people who are affiliated with the school, people who are the face of the school system, they go out and they say things and it doesn't reflect well with the values of the community. And that's important to make sure we hire someone who shares those values. We need to hire someone who knows the resources that we have. We need to hire someone who knows the aspirations of the community. And I've seen often people just apply for a job and, you know, prep for a couple of days, but this is a, this is a much more serious position. This is a much more serious hire. And I think all of these qualities should be considered. And I'll say this, and I think it's important to note, that the trust that the board and the superintendent should have and should develop, I think that's a very important aspect of this hire. And I think if that trust cannot be created almost right away, there's no way I will be able to support a new superintendent for this event. And I say this considering the fact that we are in the process of hiring a new superintendent. And many of this, you know, in this room, you know, will be people who need to work with this superintendent. And I think this is, I'll say that as a plea to Mr. Kervin and Ms. Miller who are here from the board, that I ask you to consider this, that there are two, three, four people who are not on the board today, but they will have to work with the new superintendent. So I hope you will consider this in your deliberation and your plan for the new hire.
In hiring a new superintendent, I think the most critical thing that we need to be looking for is we need a good leader. We need somebody who is a good leader, who is an effective communicator, who can bring everyone together, the community, the parents, the teachers, the board, for a common purpose to rally behind. And I think that if you have somebody who fits those qualifications as a good leader, there is absolutely nothing this school district couldn't accomplish with the right leader in charge of the district. We have great parents, we have great community members, we have great kids, we have great teachers, if we have, and we have great board members, some of them. Not your mic. But anyway, some of them. I think that if you have all these great qualities on, with all these people and you have a great leader to top it off and bring everyone together to work for a common purpose, there is seriously nothing that we couldn't accomplish as a school district. That's what I believe.
I would look for someone who is as strong a servant, someone who has experience with, really showing, can show us that they have given back to the community and led through example. I would also look for someone who really listens to their superintendent's cabinet and welcomes diverse opinions in their cabinet and values everyone's opinion. I would, I personally would think that the superintendent should have at least some teaching experience so they can, you know, really know what it's like to be in the trenches every day. I'm not saying that, you know, they had to spend their, you know, life as a teacher. I actually think it's beneficial to have, you know, other experience, business experience or whatever. And I would hope that we would look for someone who leads by empowering the people underneath them, like the administrators and the teachers, and really empowers them to make decisions on a day-to-day basis and doesn't micromanage. But I really think that as far as a school district goes, that could go a long, that goes a long way with giving teachers the power and the administration underneath them the power to really make the decisions that they feel is correct.
It's a tough decision for a school board to make every time. The average length that a superintendent currently stays is 3.8 years. I don't, it's probably one of the most difficult jobs in all of education at this stage. You're talking about a person who usually is extremely passionate about education and then gets forced to spend most of her day not dealing with education. She's dealing with budgets and she's dealing with the roof leaks and she's dealing with the, you know, all the other problems that happen and not usually the true passion of their heart and soul, which is helping the students in her classrooms succeed. You need to have a person who's committed to education. You need someone who understands it, who has the background to be a true leader of teachers, coming from a different, looking at it differently. We have one of the finest business officials in the entire Commonwealth, but definitely in the Lehigh Valley with David Bonnerberger. He manages our budgets and he can handle the business side of this. We need a strong education leader. We made that choice when we brought in Monica McHale Small because she's a true passion for education. And we continue to make that a commitment to us, that we look at education as the most important skill. This is what we do. You know, we're not making widgets. We're educating children. And we need someone who understands curriculum and understands that. School boards do not make decisions on what curriculum we teach. School boards do not make decisions on what testing we provide. We hire individuals that know the education system and we have to make sure that we trust them, we appreciate their skill set. And that's what we're here to do as managers and directors of CEOs or whatever you want to call us. But we are, we have very few jobs. We handle the budget, we hire a superintendent, and we handle policy. But we don't deal with the day-to-day educational component and that's what the educators are supposed to be doing. And that's the superintendent.
Okay, at this time, we have about half an hour left here at Dewey. So rather than ask more questions, I would like to invite all its members with questions to come up and ask them. And the reason you need to come up here is because we're filming this. So if anybody has a question, please come up and state your name and...
Hi, my name is Tracy Braven and I am a community member and a parent here in the district. And as far as the superintendent goes, I'm pretty aware that the candidates that are sitting up here will not be choosing the next superintendent. So my question is, if you were to be choosing the next superintendent, do you feel as though the next superintendent requires a doctorate? I know it may seem like a silly question, it may seem small, however, is that the most important thing in a superintendent? important thing in a superintendent?
It isn't required by law in the Commonwealth that the superintendent has a doctorate. Um, and there's value, um, I believe in a doctorate. I believe strongly in the, the rigor and the coursework that is required, um, to complete that. Um, you're required to have a certificate, uh, through superintendent's, so there is graduate level requirements past your masters to get that. But I, um, I, I work with a wide run, a variety of superintendents from masters levels all the way to PhDs. So I can't say that the people that I know that only have their masters are not as valuable. But I do find that, that the PhD provides, um, some extra rigor and some extra opportunity for them to, to have some education that I think, um, only can benefit the district. But it wouldn't be the be-all or end-all for me to make that as a final decision.
I don't think it's, although I value, um, the PhD or doctoral, uh, programs, um, I don't think that's the most important, um, criteria for the job and I wouldn't, wouldn't make it a requirement. I mean, it would be nice, but I would not make that a requirement.
I actually, I agree, actually. I think it's a nice thing to have. I think that it's not necessary and that you need to look at the individual candidates, their experience that they've had over the years. Ideally, you would want somebody who maybe had teaching experience, who was a building principal, who's been in some of these various administrative districts, who have rolled well a district so that they know how all the different aspects of a school district, um, is run. And, um, so I would say, I, I don't think that that is the end-all, be-all, having a doctorate. Um, I would look at each candidate individually and see what their strengths were.
I think the board members, uh, should be required to have a doctorate. But, uh, seriously, the, uh, the super, I think a lot more important than the degree is the leadership qualities and the vision. Uh, I know many doctors or people who have doctorates who don't have it and I, uh, know many people who don't have a doctorate and have it, uh, so it's not a required thing for me.
I as well don't see it as a big requirement. Um, it would be nice to have, but, um, I think you need to look at the individual and see what their qualities are. Do they have the ability to lead? Do they have the ability to make decisions? Do they have the ability to plan? And I've seen people who have degrees, people who don't have degrees, that are able to do the job. It's, uh, just one of those things, you need to be able to actually do the job. So I, I don't need, I, I don't see the need for them to have to have a doctorate.
So, I know that there are parents who are happy with our current superintendent and who are not happy. And you completed fifth, but I'm just curious if you are asking because maybe the last superintendent you think may have been hired because of a PhD?
No, um, my understanding is the last superintendent we actually, um, I don't think is you were outsourced, but, uh, the IU actually was put on a case to help locate a superintendent for our district. Um, and the IU doesn't necessarily know our demographics as well as, uh, their school board members. And I guess I just wanted to know what importance of having that doctorate behind your name in order to run the district where it, and, and I get it can be a business and you can look at it as a business. However, we are in the business of the children. So do you need a doctorate? That's...
Yeah. Um, I, I think that the practical experience of, of being that PhD is important. What, what were the studies? What were the, in school or in the community or in, uh, some educational facility? What was the experience, uh, there? But the fact that you asked that question, what I would suggest is that, uh, anyone who re, who does care, and everybody here obviously does, it's Friday night at eight forty in here, that, that you urge the current board, uh, to listen to what you want in a new superintendent and what's important to you, and I think they should reach out. And I'll take it one step further and say that, I already told you that I'm a Democrat and, uh, I think that what happened last year in, uh, essentially a filibuster of a Supreme Court nominee, um, uh, was wrong. So, having said that, I actually think that if we had a filibuster in the school district, we should enforce it now because if you heard my speech earlier, I referenced at least three board members who I think are, uh, have made some comments that do, are not aligned with what a majority of parents, I hope, uh, think. And, and so I, unfortunately, I, you know, I wanna sit on the board and the first downside to that is that we'll inherit a superintendent that wasn't hired by, uh, three people at least. So, Sandra would know better than I, but, um, if there is a filibuster and we need a thousand signatures, I'm, I'm, I'm up for it. Quite frankly, it's, it's August, uh, she, she's leaving in August, it's, it's really two months and we can have an interim superintendent and actually have a new board at a part where every speech here has been about transition. Um, I think it would be, uh, fair if we were able to do that.
Yeah, unfortunately, you guys don't get seated until December fifth.
Well, that's just another month, so instead of eight weeks, it's twelve.
December.
September, October, November.
Well...
September.
No.
Please leave it on straight.
Well, that, that's the very latest, it's beginning of August. So you'll be starting a school year without, if we hold on.
Well, I, I'd argue that what we've seen on, on the school board and the comments over the, the last year, that ninety days is worth a wait, so...
Um, kinda shifting back to the question, uh... I've actually hired at least a half of the PhDs, uh, as a manager, as a business manager. And I would second what some of the other, uh, candidates have said that, um, my experience has been that there's actually no discernible difference between the guys that I hired and the gals. Actually, I don't think I've hi, I hired a, a woman PhD just 'cause none ever came my way. Um, there, there really was no distinction between them. And so I definitely would say it's not a requirement. But one thing I would say is that, that the area where I was in business was different from education. In education, I think there's a lot more emphasis on degrees. And so what, what I would definitely keep in the back of my mind is that the kind of person that we would want to hire is someone that is really driven to, to succeed and to be effective. And, and I would tend to think that that kind of a person probably would get his or her PhD. And so I would definitely, if someone didn't have it, I would definitely, you know, just give it a second thought. But, um, like I said, there isn't a, uh, my own experience in, in a different industry was that, you know, smart people stop. I'd like to think I was one of them that stopped before he got a PhD. And, and plenty of people who are just okay keep going and, and you can get a PhD without being a genius. There are plenty of them out there as, as everybody who's...
Thank you very much.
So, uh, so that, that's where I am on that issue.
Do we have another, uh, questioner?
Right here, Josh. I'll be quick. My name's Alan Park, I'm from Hellertown, I own the drive, one of the few cul-de-sacs that we have. Scott, correct?
Yes.
Is that okay? You mentioned you're pro quite a few things. You're pro-choice?
Uh, yes.
Do you know what I mean? Okay, good. You also mentioned about the secretary, the education secretary here. Are you for school choice?
Uh, to a certain extent.
Okay, I'm just curious. And Joe, your question about ideology, could you define that for me?
I think someone who just hasn't...
Not your definition?
Yes.
Ideology?
Well, I'm gonna give you my definition.
Okay.
That's the one I know, very good. Um, I just, when I, because I, when I used it, what I meant was, thank you, no problem. When I used that word, I, what I meant was, is that someone who's going to not come, um, and look at the decisions that we have to make with tunnel vision or through a certain lens. You know what I mean? Like, you know, or, you know, just, I think that every, every challenge that we have to face should be taken on, on that particular issue or on the, on those, whatever the, and make decisions on the merits, but not looking through certain colored lenses. Oh, does that make sense to you?
One other question, yeah, one other question.
Okay, and I'd just like to follow your question exactly. No, go ahead, ask.
Okay, I'm just gonna, do you have any veterans here? No veterans? And I just ask one question of the audience. Of people who live in this school district, how many don't have children in the school? How many don't? That's great.
I do.
No, that, no, I, the reason I ask is, I always like, when I go to school board meetings, I see a lot of parents and children. And yet, when I go to meetings like this, I am always curious about that, you know, because that to me is important. I don't have kids in this district. And Shami, is it?
Yes.
You mentioned about taxes.
Right.
You were one of the few, I think Tracy, you also did. And everybody, I know Sandra, you said you have to raise taxes, but you have to understand that I am the taxpayer that you're going to look at and I know you do. But this is getting out of hand with, especially, you people know this, the pensions. You know what's happening. I don't really understand why I have to pay the high cost of a teacher's pension. And as school board members, you have some little input in that. But I just want you to be aware, I will watch you. I like all of you. There are two of you I wouldn't vote for, and I've been looking at you. But the idea is, I like all of you, so no matter who gets on this board, keep me in mind, I'm Mr. Taxpayer.
I'm Mrs. Taxpayer.
Scott wanted to say something else.
I was just curious, I'm assuming you're, you're a veteran?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
That's fine. And, you know, I don't mean to be crude. People say, "Thank you for your service." You also could have served. And I, I don't mean to be crude. I, I hear that a lot. But you know what? It's such a rote kind of a thing. I did it because I care about you people. I didn't do it to come back and say, "Thank you for your service." I was spit on when I came back from Vietnam. And that's why I'm not being crude here, but I just want, you know, the people say that it doesn't mean anything. Everybody says, "I go to Home Depot, thank you for your service." But I appreciate it.
Yeah, what would you like to say?
I would not like you to say any...
And that's fine, and I wouldn't pretend to have been in your position and you're right, I, I didn't serve. So we're, we're completely, completely different experiences. The one thing that I, I did wanna ask you is why it was important for you to know if I was pro-choice?
It's important for me because as a person who is pro, you mentioned about five things, that tells me where your mind is, in school, in kids, in life. It's just the person who has nothing to do with you, disrespect you for being pro, but I wanted to know because if you're pro-choice, and you say you are, are you also pro-choice? It has nothing to do with soccer, but I wanna know where your mind goes, so...
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I mean, I, these are conversations and I, I think I would just finish it by saying the two are completely unrelated. So just because it says pro before it, abortion and where you want your kid to go to school just aren't related. So I, I understand the politics of bringing up pro-choice, but you know what I mean?
I disagree.
Do you, you think, okay? Maybe we'll talk after, because I, I don't wanna, I, I don't think it's relevant to the, to the topic. Pro-choice is definitely not a Board of Education's, uh, discussion.
My name is Cynthia Keltner and I'm Scott's mother-in-law. What are any of you going to do to get elected with all the elderly, wealthy people in this area who would just love to cut the budget? If they could cut people's salaries, would cut them, I, I'm a car, but I'm all for education. But every day I'm around people who are not hurting and I know there are people who are. I acknowledge that. But what are any of you going to say to these people who couldn't care less to just want lower taxes?
Good question. Um, I, I, I think that's a great question. And first of all, I would like to say that I definitely know that there are people in our community who have been here for a long time, who no longer have kids in the district and who are retired and are in fixed incomes and they may be struggling to pay taxes. And I definitely am going to keep those folks in mind. Uh, and there are also young families with kids who want their kids to go to the schools in Socken Valley and want, and, and just stretch their finances to the very limit in order to live here. But, um, I think that it's, it's really important to, um, to, uh, what was the question again?
I'm a business...
Oh, right, right. I, I understand, I understand. Sorry, sorry, sorry. So, so here's what, what I've actually gotten up in front of the board and I've said several times to Ed and some of the other board members as well, is that the folks who think that since they're retired, they don't have kids anymore and they don't have, they shouldn't have to pay property taxes, is that keep in mind who are the people that are going to graduate, go to work and pay tax care, pay taxes for social security so that you guys can continue to get your checks and get your medical care. I mean, we all depend on the next generation coming along and being productive. Our kids have to compete not just, not just with the community down the road or the community in the next state, they have to compete with the, the kids in China, the kids in, in India and all the rest of the world and where, where you, you're, you're probably all familiar with just how hard that is when, when their pay is so much lower than it is here in the U.S. And so we need to give our kids the ability to compete with, with, with those, with the other parts of the world as well with each other so that we can keep our society together, so that we can keep jobs in the U.S. and, and we can have a prosperous economy. And that benefits the seniors, that benefits all of us. And so that's the argument I use.
Who knew my mother-in-law would ask the hardest question on the night? Thank you, Cynthia. Um, you know, I don't think anybody who's running for school board necessarily has aspirations to be the next president or governor or congressman and I, I certainly don't. I thought that I could participate and help, uh, help this community and help, help our school district. So, however, you know, the discussion that you have with an elderly person, I don't consider you elderly, Cynthia, is, is, uh, you know, it's, it's gonna sound political, but you know, the story of our, our country is that we, we fought for freedom, we fought for future generations, you did. I won't thank you for it and, and offend you, but you know what I mean? And the, the idea that in other countries, uh, generations take care of the next generation and until death... death, and they move in with them. Here, depends on the family. But my point is that what I would say to somebody who has grandparents, and many individuals do, is that what do you hope for the future of your grandchildren? And I can imagine there's anyone who doesn't want the best for them, but if they happen to live in another school district, is it okay to raise taxes there in another school district and not here because you happen to live here? So I think the beauty of the country is the idea that we have this educational system, which we consistently try to improve, and I think that's, you know, that's the face-to-face story that you have, there aren't any promises. I don't think anybody, I don't think anyone up here promised to not raise taxes. So, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if that's what you're voting on, you know, specifically, then that's how you choose your candidate. If you, if that's a definite, you need a no to vote, that's the beauty of the country, right? You vote for things like pro-choice and things like pro-voucher system and pro-charter schools and all those things.
Tough question. I'm trying to marshal my thoughts here. I think one thing you have to look at is, it takes the community to raise any child. So everybody has to pitch in in some manner. One thing we've seen especially with this area is, I remember when I first moved in here, there was a lot of elderly families in here, and over the course of the past sixteen years, you're starting to see a lot more younger families moving into this area, which of course is also placing more children into the school district. Some of the younger families, of course, you know, are trying to start out, but you also have the older generation who is living on a fixed income. Because we do have more kids coming into the district, you do have more costs associated with that. But I think the important thing you need to say is, if we don't have a strong education system, and we don't have a strong district to educate those children, then as they come up, they won't have the ability to be able to get the good-paying jobs and to get the higher wages, be able to support the programs that are supporting the older generation. So it's all kind of a symbiotic relationship. You need to be willing to pay forward essentially and help educate those children so that you can reap the benefits later on.
So, like I said, I won't raise taxes, I won't raise certain taxes on certain people. Let me, let me explain. And maybe I'll go, I have a neighbor, a good friend of mine, a couple weeks ago, and said, "I'll have to sell my house and go to San Araby or buy a house in Bethlehem, I can't afford the taxes here." A veteran, a retired member of the community, and someone who's lived here for his entire life. If he can't consider that case, the case of this gentleman, and many, many other people who are like him in this community, we really don't know the community that you're serving. And I really believe that this is a real issue. We can't not have that problem and pretend others have a solution for it, or just, you know, it kind of like, feels like, the board member who said a few days ago, "Just deal with it," in a different context, this sounds to me like that, you know? You can't put the taxes, just deal with it. That's, that's not the right approach. So, let me tell you what I believe in terms of the taxes. First of all, I don't believe the numbers that we see. I know there are these five-year projections and so forth. I, I remember that last year, we went to one of the board meetings, and the administration brought the budget, and the board asked them to cut half a million from that budget, and a few days later, they came back with a budget that was half a million dollars short. I, I think we need to look at all those numbers and see where the budget projection is, what is the correct value there. The second point I want to make is that, you know, everything that we say here about the taxes, it may be a moot point in a few months. There is a, there is a bill in Harrisburg that is being considered, HB 76, and that could restructure our entire tax system funding for the, for the, for the public education. So, it would shift the burden from the real estate tax to, to the income tax and to the, to the sales tax, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of that or opposed to that, my point is that we can say we want to raise taxes, we can say we don't want to raise taxes, but in a few months, we may not have the authority to do either of them. So, we should, we should consider that when we talk about this issue with the community, we should be honest about it. The third point I want to make is that we haven't really considered the options that we have for raising revenue, for supporting our programs. Ms. McGrath here mentioned some of them, and I think these are important opportunities that we have to explore. I don't think we've done that. Partnership with corporations, with the industries, with the foundations, I have done that in my job, and I have been successful at, and I think we should, we should go to that as the next step. But, at the end of the day, if we have to generate more revenues, and if it is still upon us to do that, I'm not gonna raise taxes for my neighbor who is a seventy-some-year-old retiree veteran, and this would drive him out of this district. We have to find other ways to make sure that the tax burden on him and elderly retired people who are in fixed income would decrease. And I'll pledge that, and I'll work with anyone who is willing to work on that, but that's, I think that's something that we should consider, and that's something that we should pledge, and that's something that we should, we should...
I, I know the tax issue is a very sensitive topic to a lot of people. And when I think about it, I think about how, as a family growing up, in a blue-collar family with living paycheck to paycheck, a small tax increase could have made a huge difference in terms of staying in our home or things of that nature. So, with that being said, I also, after law school, lived down in the Philadelphia suburbs for ten years. My taxes here in Sockin Valley are double what I paid in the Philadelphia suburbs for all those years, and they have the top-notch schools and school districts in Pennsylvania. So, once to the issue, I can tell you that before I would vote to raise taxes, there are about fifty other things I would be doing to look at to save money. You brought up vouchers and charter schools. This district pays like one and a half million dollars a year to charter schools. Has anyone ever gone to those, parents are putting their kids in charter schools just because they feel that this school district is not meeting a need of their child? Has anyone gone to those parents to see if there is something we could be doing differently to retain those students in our district and not paying that money out to charter schools? I don't think so. That's one area. You know, there's a lot of different areas to look at, and there's a lot of different ways to try to raise revenue before I go down the road of voting for a tax increase that is going to harm a lot of senior citizens and people in this area who can't, who simply cannot afford it. I would take every step first before I would make that decision, so I could look everybody in the eye and say, "I did everything I could not to raise taxes before I make that decision."